Someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Mr. Mecca, first. Second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Bornstein, Mrs. Van Seis, and Dr. Van Nader. On that note, we do seem like we're a little light tonight. I apologize. We actually do have board members that are here. We just have a conflict this evening where we have open houses going on simultaneously, and most of our board members are parents as well as board members, so you will see them arrive probably about halfway through the proceedings here this afternoon or this evening. I'd like to ask Dr. Sieri, please, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all the marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we do request that you please turn your cellphone on to mute or silence any other devices. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mr. Meyer, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Martzoff, do we have any board recognitions this evening?
We do this evening. Thank you, Mr. Lemay. In Williamsville, we value the strong partnership we have with our parents, and tonight, we are proud to recognize two of our schools and their PTA units for earning the designation as a National PTA School of Excellence. This recognition program supports and celebrates partnerships between PTAs and schools where families feel welcomed and empowered to support student success. High Middle and Maple West Elementary were among only 278 schools across the country to receive this two-year designation for 2018 through 2020. This is the third time High Middle has earned the award and the first time for Maple West, which also won the National PTA's top honor for their commitment in building an inclusive and welcoming school community. I would like to invite our principals and their PTA leaders to say a few words about this important designation, beginning with Mr. Jeff Jakluski, Principal of High Middle School. Mr. Jakluski.
Thank you, Dr. Martzoff, and thank you for -- Mrs. Laura Brand for being here, our current PTSA president at High Middle. We are honored and proud to be named a National PTA School of Excellence for the third consecutive time. This award recognizes the positive partnership between High Middle School and the parents of High's students. I would like to thank our former PTSA co-presidents Amy Hulse and Amy McDermott and current PTSA co-presidents Laura Brand and Terry Perino for their leadership and unwavering support of our school. Our goal at High is always to make families feel welcomed and empowered to support student success. Our PTSA is a key partner in this endeavor. The school and PTSA encourage family engagement and help parents build positive relationships with school staff, connect with other families in the school environment, and enrich the educational experience and overall well-being for students. We appreciate everything our PTSA does for High Middle because we truly believe that it makes a difference in all of our children's lives. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Charlie Galuso, the principal at Maple West Elementary School.
Good evening, and thank you. There's an old saying that it takes a village, and at Maple West, we truly have a village. And it's not just a village at Maple West. Our village includes Dr. Martzoff, all of our assistant superintendents in the Board of Education that help us with our children to raise that village. We also want to send out a special thank you to Dr. Sieri. As we know, this is our last board meeting tonight, and when you talk about the word inclusion, and you talk about the word wellness, and you talk about PTSA, you have to think about Dr. Sieri. So on behalf of us, we'd like to thank you for being one of the leaders of our village. So, thank you. So along with me tonight, I have Mrs. Seis, who was our current president, Mrs. Kristen Appleby is one of our vice presidents, and Mrs. Smith -- Sarah Smith Ronan, who was our immediate past president, and Mrs. Smith Ronan is going to address the board.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you all about this. We are absolutely thrilled to receive this award from the National PTA. Dr. Galuso said it so perfectly about being a village, and I think that I would be remiss not to say our village leader is Dr. Galuso. He is the one that has set the tone at our school to welcome and include families. He starts every single open house by giving his cellphone number out and making sure that every parent feels welcome. He sets the tone by attending all of our PTA meetings, and he was the one who was instrumental in really including the ELL learners that allowed us to receive this award. Dr. Galuso, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. This is Dr. Sieri's last evening, and I know if I say anything more than 15 seconds long, I'll be scolded and yelled at later, so I will keep it very brief, but I did want to say congratulations. You've done an excellent career here. You've made a lot of significant impact on the district, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire board that we will severely miss you at our tables here on a monthly basis and the overall presence that the district will miss with your departure. So I do congratulate you, and I hope you have a very well-deserved retirement. Are there any other board acknowledgements this evening? Oh, okay. Mr. McLaren, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at 2:30 minutes so that you may conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues. Give us ideas and share your opinions, but not engage in any personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation. And at this time, we have no one who has signed up to speak at public expression. If there's anyone in our audience who does feel now they would like to address us or come to the podium, you may certainly do so. Seeing none.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Mr. Mecca, second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Martzoff, is there anybody we'd like to introduce this evening?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to introduce to the board our new principal at East High School, who will be starting as soon as possible, once we can find some temporary replacements to help out with the administrative oversight at North High School. Certainly, he's done a tremendous job as an assistant principal at North and prior to that as a physical education teacher and a coach at North High School, and certainly he's going to be a true credit to East High School as he assumes the principal responsibilities there. So I'd like to introduce, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Brian Swatlin.
I thought I lost my notes for a minute, so that wouldn't have been good. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Martzoff, Dr. Sieri, Dr. Baylen, Mr. Matusky, and Dr. McKenna for this opportunity to lead Williamsville East High School. I'd also like to thank the staff at North for helping me become the administrator I am today. Along the way, I've worked with many great principals in the district, and really, I was able and fortunate enough to learn some invaluable lessons from them. Mr. Bowen, who preceded me at North High School, has been instrumental. Mr. Smillich has helped me along the way, and to them, I thank them. I'm blessed to have two veteran administrators in Mrs. DeSantis and Mr. Gray, and I'm looking forward to beginning our work together. And finally, I cannot tell you how excited I am to begin to be a part of the culture of excellence that exists at East High School and ingrain myself in the community. My primary goal is to meet the staff, the students, and the parents, and to learn all the greatness East has to offer. Thank you again for this exciting opportunity, and thank you.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on August the 7th, 2018? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you. Second. Dr. McLaren, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries -- I'm just double-checking our notes here. One, two, three, four. Yeah, well, it technically does not carry because -- Mr. Meyer, you were not at the meeting. You have to abstain.
I don't have to abstain. I can still.
Okay. I'll take you non-abstaining for this time. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting held on September the 11th, 2018, though? Mr. Mecca, second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting held on September the 18th, 2018? Mr. Meyer, second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Opening day for staff and support staff and faculty was held on Tuesday, August the 28th, 7:15 a.m. at North High School Auditorium. We had Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Bornstein, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, and myself in attendance. The opening day for support staff was held later that morning at 11:00 a.m. at East High School. Mr. Bornstein and myself attended that. Board visitations coming up between now and our next meeting. We have one visitation that's on the calendar. It is Monday, October the 15th at 8:00 a.m. This is the AIM, the Alternative Instructional Model Building. I currently show right now Mr. Bornstein, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, and myself. Is there anybody else here at the table that can also attend that morning? Nope. Moving on to Erie County Association of School Board, the Board Presidents, Vice Presidents, and Superintendents reception was held Thursday, August the 23rd. Commissioner Mary Ellen Elia had a Q and A there with the members in attendance. She spoke on broad topics like ESA, standard -- or excuse me, ESSA, the state mandated testing, state standards, federal mandates, APPR. We did -- I should say, we -- I had a slight dialogue with the commissioner on regards to APPR, and at the end of that dialogue, we concluded that she will be coming to visit us here in Williamsville to bring her APPR roundtable to the Williamsville facility and faculty sometime in September or October. I don't believe we've had a more formal date other than that so far, and being the last week of September, I'm going to guess it's going to be October. Then we have the delegate assembly that attended September 6th, and Dr. McLaren attended that. Do you have anything to report on that, please?
I did submit a report, but basically, it was an opportunity to have a roundtable of how the beginning of school went for all the various attendees in different districts, and everyone seemed to have a good beginning of the school year.
Okay, thank you. Legislative Committee was on September the 13th, followed by the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Mecca, you attended both of those. You want to give us a quick update on both, please?
Yes, President Lemay, thank you for the heads-up via email prior to giving this report this time. I appreciate that. There will be a legislative roundtable meeting open to all school board members on 10/11, so Mrs. Carey, I know, is arranging board member attendance if interested, and I think maybe people have had the opportunity to reply at this point. With respect to that meeting, one of the legislative priorities, the ECASB, is to bring New York State in as an equal partner in terms of the percentage of total statewide expenditures for public schools. The high point for state contribution was 2001, 2002, when the state paid for approximately 48 percent of all education-related expenses for public schools. Currently, New York State picks up about 41 percent, and looking at the country as a whole, the nationwide average for states is 47 percent. So our goal is to bring New York State up to be an equal partner in sharing the educational expenses across New York State, not on a per-district basis. With respect to the ECASB Budget and Finance Meeting, which was actually before the legislative meeting, there was discussion of the restructuring of the leadership roles from one director to two separate leadership positions. Both of those positions would be part-time. One of the leadership positions would be filled by David Lowry, who is starting to transition into that position, and he will focus mostly on the day-to-day aspects of the organization, whereas the other position, filled by Dr. Bruce Frazier, will focus on advocacy. Fundraising through sponsorships is ahead of schedule for ECASB, and there are plans to improve the sponsorship program. So coming -- oh, sorry about that. Coming up, October 4th, there's the Fall Leadership Dinner, which I think you mentioned. Did you mention that?
Not yet.
Okay. You will be mentioning that. The October 11th Legislative Roundtable and Legislative Meeting, which I mentioned. November 15th, speedboarding on the use of strategic data, and December 6th, there's an Albany update.
Great, thank you. As Mr. Mecca already gave away, the Annual School Leadership Dinner will be held on Thursday, October the 4th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Protocol Restaurant on 6756 Transit Road, Williamsville, New York. Right now, I show only two board members attending, Dr. McLaren and Mr. Mecca. Are there any other board members here that would like to attend? Kind of narrowing it down to two, sorry. Legislative Committee is Thursday, October the 11th, 2018, 6:30 p.m. till 8:30 p.m. This will be the Erie County Association School Board Legislative Roundtable Forum held at Erie 1 Bowses, Building A, Rooms 1A through A4 -- excuse me, A1 through A4. And that I show Dr. McLaren, Mr. Mecca, and myself so far signed up for that. Mrs. Leatherbarrow or Mr. Meyer interested? Nope, moving on. Does anyone have anything else to report under the Erie County Association of School Boards this evening? Okay. Moving on to New York State School Board Association, the Education 2030 Summit. Dr. McLaren attended that, the summit. That was held on September the 12th in Buffalo here. Dr. McLaren, do you want to comment? Give us an update on that, please?
Again, I did present a written report, but very briefly, it was an interesting -- they called it a summit. There were probably about 100 or so people there. It was interesting to be at Buffalo State. It was a brand-new building. This was the first event that was held in the Alumni Center in Buffalo State. They technically hadn't even had their, like, opening ceremony, but they held the conference there. It's a very nice facility. And so in terms of the summit, the first speaker was, again, Commissioner Mary Ellen Elia, and the whole focus of this particular summit, it was called Education 2030. And so it was talking about things that we in education and school districts and teachers in a classroom need to do and how we should be focusing our energies and the things that we do for students, for students who are going to be heading into a future for which many of the jobs that they will be taking have not even been created or thought about yet. And so there was discussion about how we can do things to help work for the future, not just maintain things the way they are. And Commissioner Elia did talk about that change is inevitable, and it's our responsibility to embrace change. And this is in terms of various pieces of technology. And then there was a gentleman from Education for IBM Corporate Citizenship. It was kind of interesting to hear him talk about Watson, which was the computer that was on Jeopardy that won, and he was talking about uses for Watson in the classroom and all the different free items that are available to teachers. And then Dr. Bill Daggett also talked about focusing on forward-thinking schools as opposed to future-focused schools in terms of what we need to do and what we need to do for the future. That's -- the rest of the details are in the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Board of Officers Academy is this Friday, September the 28th, from 8:00 a.m. until 3:30 p.m. at the Hilton Garden Inn Rochester University and Medical Center located 30 Celebration Drive, Rochester, New York, 14620. I believe I am the only person in attendance, and I will report back to the board on that. The 99th Annual Convention for the New York State School Board Association will be held in New York City at the Sheridan New York Times Square Hotel on October 25th through the 27th, 2018. Currently, board attendees, I show Mrs. Beeger, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Mr. Lemay, Mr. Mecca, Mr. Meyer, and Mrs. Van Seis. I do need to ask for a new volunteer to be the voting delegate alternate, as Mr. Bornstein had some unexpected business and had to withdraw. So those going? Mr. Mecca? Okay, great. I can talk to you offline about what we do and how we do it.
If other people are interested, too, I just rose my hand as somebody that might be interested, but I don't want to preclude anybody else.
Not a problem. Appreciate it. In your packet this month for the proposed 2018 bylaws and amendments and resolutions, please make sure you review these, as next month, I'll be giving recommendations that I would like to vote on on behalf of our board at the annual meeting. This will give everyone enough time to review and discuss these so that we're all in agreement. Someone like to make a motion to approve and send the letter for support of increase to salary cap bill as presented in your packet? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Meyer, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Does anyone else have anything to report under the New York State School Board Association this month? Nope. The community forum, the next community forum, put it on your calendars now, Saturday, November the 17th, 2018. This will be at Williamsville South High School from 9:00 a.m. until noon. This is a Saturday. Again, for those that don't know what a community forum is, this is the opportunity for anybody in the community, homeowners, teachers, facility, faculty, staff, students, parents, anybody that's related to anything in the district, to have a two-way dialogue with the board members. Unlike coming to our normal board member or board meeting, excuse me, where we open up the podium and it's kind of a one-way presentation, this is the opportunity for you to ask questions, tell us what we're doing well, and question what we're doing on other things. Give us ideas and suggestions on what you'd like to see. So I encourage everybody to please come. Again, Saturday, November 17th, South High School, 9:00 a.m. until noon. Would someone like to make a motion to take the August 7th, 2018 motion from the table and second discussion and approval of the board retreat dates? Dr. McLaren, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow. So the two -- oh, all in favor? Sorry. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. The two dates, the one that was really in question this whole time has been the December date. Looks like we have consensus now that it is going to be Saturday, December the 1st, 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. That'll be here in district offices. Now that we have the date, we'll work on the facilitator for that. The other date is Saturday, the March 30th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. as well. So make sure you block that off in your calendars. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the board retreat dates as presented? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mr. Meyer, all in favor? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Board goals. We get to take a glamorous pause in our meeting here as we scoot along and pull up our board goals from last night. We're going to take a look at implementation plans. If you remember last month, we figured out what our board goals were. You know, and the first one's up on the screen right now, Board District and Community Engagement to Foster and Enhance Relationships While Continuing to Improve Two-Way Communications with Students, Families, and Community Stakeholders. The idea now is how do we implement? How do we gauge how we're doing? What is the sure sign that we're succeeding at this goal? How do we put something tangible to benchmark against here? I know there were suggestions -- excuse me, some suggestions put down on here. We don't necessarily have to accept all of these, but we do want to, you know, tweak them, modify them, look at them if there's any question on it that maybe they are not tweaked in as well as we want. So this is kind of an open discussion. So we'll start with the first one here, again, under Board District and Community Engagement. The first activity was to serve as liaisons to PTA, PTSA, and SEPSEM meetings and submit liaison reports. I don't believe we have a liaison to SEPSEM anymore, so that's got to be updated to just show PT and PTSA meetings. The timeline is ongoing, and of course, the indicator here is that all board members would complete liaison reports 100 percent of the time and share board-related contacts with fellow board members. I know we ask here at the board table on this goal typically to let other board members know with enough notice so that we can fill in for you. I have asked the district clerk this year to kind of keep an ongoing tally for us so that we can kind of this year gauge how we're doing, and she's going to report on that before every meeting for us. Any changes to this?
I bless you.
Bless you.
Taking off SEPSEM?
Yes.
What about adding the other committees that board members attend to as liaisons?
That's true. It should probably just say serve as liaisons to various bodies or various -- because there's a lot of them now. We have the Erie County, we have NISBA, we have the shared decision, we have RITE.
What if we have PTA, PTSA, and other community meetings?
I'm open to any way to verbalize that. I'm open to any way to verbalize that. Board members completing liaison reports 100% of the time and share board-related contacts with fellow board members. I would say the progress indicator there is, is the board should strive for 100% attendance and reporting. And when one cannot facilitate, we'll, or one cannot attend, we'll facilitate a substitute whenever possible.
Okay.
Yes?
I certainly know that situations arise and emergencies and people can't go. But I still believe firmly that if a person does attend, then that person does need to do a report. So, I'd like the report faction to stay at 100%.
Right. I would agree. Strive for 100% attendance with 100% reporting.
Something like that.
Mrs. Wolfher, I know we don't have a slide up there that we're editing in real time. Is that a problem? Can we just take notes, or? I'm kind of leaving it to both of you, Mrs. Carey.
We'll take notes.
You both will? Okay.
And we'll update.
Thank you. I know normally we edit it on the fly, but that's not necessary tonight. Thank you. Showcase the work to the district subset groups and regularly schedule board meetings. Identify at least one group that would be willing to attend board meetings and give a brief presentation of the group's mission, goals, and activities. I know we talked about this quite a bit in the fall. Do we want to put a number on this? How many times? I know it was suggested monthly, and I think we came back that said monthly was a little overbearing. Maybe three times a year? I'm just throwing an arbitrary number out there. Three times during the academic calendar year?
I would like that.
That sound good?
Sounds reasonable.
Reasonable?
That's fine.
Dr. Marslov, if it's not reasonable, jab me here, would you? Please? Thanks. Respond to individuals who contact or speak before the board. Listen to and acknowledge all feedback from stakeholders. I guess this is just there as an ongoing thing. I know any correspondence with the board we reply to, we make sure that we reply to in a very timely manner. So, this is just an ongoing, I don't know that we can actually put a metric to it. Hold two board community forums throughout the year. We are having one in November and April. Forums are offered and attended by community members. That's pretty self-sufficient. Visit all the schools and district facilities throughout the year to listen to employees. School visits in each activity. Board president to complete a report on each visit representing information shared by all board members in attendance. Where the goal here is to strive for three board members in attendance for each visit. On that, on a side, I also suggest that every board member try and strive for attending three board visits if possible. I do know job responsibilities sometime preclude that and make that difficult, but whenever possible, to try, strive for that. Anything else for that line, or is that sufficient? Good, okay. Schedule a minimum of three meetings with union leaders. I don't know that we need to put three down. I think this is one area that we could probably change. Anybody wants to jump in and suggest the change? I'm thinking we, the idea is that we want to be open, transparent, and available, obtainable. So, I think instead of schedule a minimum of three meetings with union leaders, open the, I'm trying to think of how to phrase it. Open, yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Leatherbarrow.
First off, I wanted to point out that we have scheduled with union leaders. Perhaps we need to specify which unions, since we have several unions in our district. Last year, we met as a board with the WTA, or the board met with the WTA, two times or three times?
Three times.
Three times? I think perhaps we changed the wording to invite. My understanding that those meetings are very beneficial, and I'd like to continue them if that is the pleasing of the WTA as well. So, perhaps instead of saying "schedule," we could say invite WTA union leaders to participate in two to three?
I'm gonna suggest invite all union leaders. And if they're willing, I mean, we can send out a letter from the board inviting them, and if they're willing, they can reply and say, "Yes, we'd like to schedule a meeting. We'd like to have ongoing meetings," whatever, but allow the opportunity for all the union bodies to come and meet with us if they choose. Last year, most of the unions turned down the offer.
Okay. I didn't realize that we had done that last year.
Yep.
So, I like that. Then, take off the number and just use the word invite.
Invite union leaders to meet with the board?
Invite all union leaders to meet with the board.
Throughout the year?
I don't think the intention is at the same time. I think it's tended to be a one-on-one invite. I don't know if we need to specify that or not, but.
I would suggest that it, even though we want to have it more broader, I think it does need to say invite the union leaders of, the leaders of each employee union or something like that to attend.
Do we need to spell out the unions?
I don't think so.
Do we have, what do we have, seven union bodies?
Well, you can send a letter to all seven. But I think it does have to say somehow that it's a specific meeting with a specific group, not that we want to have one, one large meeting.
Okay, so invite, invite union leaders to a one-on-one meeting with the board. I hate to use the "one-on-one," but I can't think of another way to say it. A private meeting with the board?
What's not a private meeting?
Well, we'd be inviting them most likely to executive session, so.
Okay, then it is a private meeting, okay.
Or we would, like we with the WTA, we formed a committee to meet with them, so.
Okay. That might be fine, because if you look at the progress indicators, that.
Board and superintendent to meet with various union leaders and executive committee throughout the school year.
I don't believe it's an executive session, correct?
Well, I know the WAA came to executive session last year.
No, but the meetings that you held last year with the WTA, those were not executive session meetings.
That's correct, because we weren't there in a quorum. They were a private meeting with them on.
But that's what we're asking to continue, that it would still be a committee of the board. So, if it's a committee of the board, it couldn't be an executive session.
You're right in that it wouldn't be an executive session, but I'm trying to think of how that would work, because it's not.
Why don't we just keep the language, like, really simple? Just say invite?
Why don't you say board committee and superintendent?
Right. Right, right, okay.
Did you hear that part?
So, board committee. So, we would change the progress indicator, board committee and superintendent to meet with various union leaders and their executive committees throughout the school year. Thank you for the wording there. And I think we just leave it as invite union leaders to meet with board committee and superintendent. And we leave it broad like that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay, move on. Student wellness. Support physical, mental, and emotional needs of students by providing necessary appropriate resources for wellness, program, and initiatives. Here, we have two activities. Monitor and review the annual wellness report and use data to guide decision-making. For example, mindfulness initiatives in the K-4 recess program. The progress indicators here are reports, presentations by the district and wellness committee. Do we want to modify this? This is, yes, Mrs. Leatherbarrow.
I would suggest we just take off the part that's in parentheses so as to make sure that we're keeping it current.
Okay. Just delete the parentheses on, so it ends it to guide decision-making. Any progress indicators to put to this? Other than just reports, presentations by district wellness committees? Okay. Support district initiatives and programs that address drug use and other mental health issues affecting the youth in our community. Receive report on search institute survey results to include recommendations. Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I'd like to suggest that we remove this activity, only because I don't feel it's a board goal. I feel it's more of a district goal.
I agree. I think this is leftover from last year. Yeah, so, spring 2019. Everybody agree? Is there any other student wellness activities that we could put down in its place?
I think activity number one takes care of it. Our role as a board is to monitor and review.
Mm-hmm. All in agreement?
I have a question.
All right, yeah, please.
I probably had said it when it first went up there, that I don't believe we can use the word "support" because that's not measurable. So, I would be in agreement with removing activity number two. But I would also like to take the progress indicator about the search institute material and move that up to a progress indicator for number one. Because the search institute material does talk about wellness and so forth and so on.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll move that indicator up and then delete activity two. Perfect.
Can I pause for one minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Siri, I hate to put you on the spot. Do you have any suggestions or recommendations that we could add to this?
We will be also working on the implementation of the mental health literacy component, so that might be a piece that could get blended in with the presentation and just the updates that are happening. So, that's going to be an activity that Dr. Baylen and I and Mr. Moojika will be presenting on this evening. So, that could be something that would be, maybe of interest to the board. We also are working actively on social-emotional learning, and so that would be another component that would probably fall under there. And the last piece I will share with you, we do indeed have our search institute results back. We just got them recently. And so, all the buildings do have that information of those that participated, which are the middle school and high schools. And that could certainly be information that could be presented from a district aggregate level.
And you're gonna come back and present that to us? I like that.
So, instead of just annual wellness report, do we want to extend on that piece of it?
We could break out everything she just mentioned. I would, because I mean, or you can leave it generic, because that is, I mean, those are gonna be various presentations to us from the wellness committees over the course of the year. So, both captions will capture that data.
And just so I'm clear, we're setting this tonight so that we vote on it next month?
No, we'll vote on it tonight.
We'll vote on it tonight.
As soon as we're done setting it, we'll vote on it. Then, we will come back in January to get a gauge as to how we're doing, and then we'll wrap it up in June, excuse me. Okay? Any other additions for student wellness? Okay, student achievement. Provide the optimal environment for learning, creativity, and engagement by supporting the fundamental educational needs for all our students. We have three tasks under here. Receive data on instructional program and student performance and use data to guide decision-making. That would be to analyze information received to ensure that the instructional programs are leading to improved student performance. Thoughts?
Seems fine.
I think all, I think the whole page seems fine. I'm just saving you a little time.
Okay. Let me read through the whole page, and if nobody says anything, we'll move on. Bullet two, remain informed and advocate in the issues of affecting children in public education, including but not limited to legislative matters, the impact and changes in federal and state laws and regulations, including the New York State priorities, education funding, and instructional program and curricula. With a progress indicator to meet at least once this year with the state and/or federal elected officials. Attend and be active in the Erie County Association of School Board, as well as the New York State School Board Association. Item three, monitor that the district's professional development plan is meeting data team goals, connects to district curriculum standards, and aligns with the New York State teaching standards and the district APPR plan as set forth by the district. And indicators, progress indicators, reports, presentations by the professional development committee and the data team members. That word "monitor" is in there. I know you don't like that.
Well, "monitor" is better than whatever you had.
Support.
Support, okay. Okay. This sounds okay to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on. Board efficacy. Identify and implement best practices. Transition to searchable digital format of meeting packets and agendas, attachments, and anything that is made available in the both board members and to the general public. The digital format and training for new system board docs will be the transition format utilized in 2018, 2019. And that is a definite measurable indicator, because I believe we're gonna cut over to that next month. Is that correct, Mrs. Carey?
We're working on training. It would be October 16th, and then hopefully planning to be everyone on board by November.
November, okay. But that's definitely a progress indicator.
There.
Good. Share all board-related correspondences through email with all board members. Evaluate at spring board retreat. School board time to monitor and evaluate board goals, excuse me, schedule board time to monitor and evaluate board goals. That's kind of what we're doing right now, isn't it? To set them, and then we're gonna monitor them in January and June. So, I would put that down in the final report column, Mrs. Carey, that those dates that we're gonna come back around to this. Complete evaluation and present during public board meetings, so that would be on those two nights, whatever the board meetings are those two months. Hold two retreats to discuss board operations and/or board development, fall, spring. Conduct retreats with the board quorum in attendance. We do have them set for December 1st and March 30th. Finalize those this evening, so again, trackable. Transition to a more technologically efficient programs for evaluations and goal-setting activities. This will be a fiscal year-long. I know we are starting to utilize new tools like Super Evol, Google, NISBA. I know we've also talked at our spring retreat, that might be the topic of that, of how to kind of work more closely with district and board to set goals. That sound good here? Any additions, changes, modifications? All good so far? Okay, moving on. Budget development and fiscal oversight. Oversee a fiscally responsible budget that upholds the mission and the values of the school community. Oversee the 2018, 2000, I don't know, is it '18 capital project or is it '19 capital project? It is '18, okay. Oversee the 2018 capital project to enhance district facilities and increase New York State aid to the Williamsville Central School District. Request that administration provide implications to budget offerings at varying tax rate levels. The indicator administration provides request information prior to the budget adaptation. Mr. Matusky, we always look to you heavily for that, and you do us a good deed, so thank you. Collaborate with district administration to establish priorities related to the instructional program and facility needs. And then, we make budget recommendations to the district as an indicator. Any other questions on this one, budget development, fiscal oversight? Am I missing anything? Do we hit it on the head? Do these all seem obtainable, that we can put numbers to, we can crunch and say, "Yeah, we can do this. Yeah, we didn't. We succeeded." It's the goal this year, is to be more responsible and evaluate our own selves to make sure that we're hitting our goals, but that we're also operating well as a board. So, this is a major piece to it. That being said, we'll come back around. So, would someone like to make a motion to accept the board goal implementation plans as we've just discussed? Mr. Mecca, is there a second? Dr. McClary, thank you. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to authorize Dr. McClary as the voting board delegate for the 2018, 2019 Shared Services Countywide Committee? Mr. Mecca, second? Mr. Meyer, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Can I go?
Sure you can. Motion carries unanimously. If you don't, it doesn't pass. Oh, let's see. We are here. Okay, Dr. Marslov, we're up to you on your community update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. I would just like to echo the comments of some others at the board table and in the community that have thanked Dr. Anna Siri, our Assistant Superintendent for Exceptional Education and Student Services, for her years of service to the district and her complete and utter dedication to the Williamsville Central School District. Thank you, Dr. Siri, for all that you've done for so many years, for so many people. You really have an extremely positive outlook and always strive to find the good in every single scenario, no matter how dire it might appear from the outside. And I'm very thankful for your leadership in your area, as well as many others. It's hard to imagine how Mr. Scanzuso is going to replace all of the responsibilities that you oversee and take care of for our district. I understand he probably won't be spending much time with his family anymore, given the immense job responsibilities. But you certainly worked hard for a long time, and you deserve a long, happy. But you certainly worked hard for a long time, and you deserve a long, happy, and safe retirement. So thank you very much, and best wishes to you, and stay in touch, because you never know, he might come back. No.
Anything else under your community update? That's it? Okay. How about the opening day school, opening day report then, please?
Yes, I would like to thank our leadership team, our assistant superintendents, and also all of our administrators across the district, as well as our teachers and our support staff, for all the work and planning that went on throughout the summer, leading up to the start of the school year. It's really been a terrific start, despite some of the construction going on in the community. Most of our buses have run pretty well in terms of being on time. And that certainly has taken a great degree of planning and effort and communication with everyone. Certainly, our schools were fully staffed, ready to go. Our class sizes were where they needed to be. And we welcome students with open arms in a warm setting that supports their physical and emotional health and growth. So thank you to everyone that's played an important role in that. It doesn't happen easily or without a lot of hard work, sacrifice, and planning. So terrific opening, very proud of all the work we've done, and hope that we continue on with an excellent school year.
Thank you. The board has received the 2018, 2019 district goals implementation plans. Does anyone here at the table have any questions about these plans? Nope? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for the certification of lead evaluator, lead, excuse me, evaluators as presented? I knew I was going to make that mistake. Dr. McClary, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to take the August 7, 2018 motion from the table for a second reading and adoption for the following, of the following policies? Policy number 7131, education of students in temporary housing. I believe that's it, right? Yep. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you. Is there a second? Dr. McClary, thank you. All in favor? Okay, so it's back on the table. Would someone like to make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the following policy, 7131, education of students in temporary housing? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second? Mr. Meyer, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move the first reading of the following new policies? Policy 7135, education of students in foster care, and policy 7522, head injury, MTBI, concussion management. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there a second? Mr. Meyer, excuse me, Mr. Mecca, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make, to move to table the motion for second reading and adoption of new policies at the October 23, 2018 regular board meeting? Again, this would be policy 7135, education of students in foster care, and 7522, head injury, MTBI, and concussion management. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second? Mr. Meyer, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint the DASDA district and building coordinators as presented? Mr. Mecca, is there a second? Dr. McClary, any discussion? All in favor? Abstention, motion carries unanimously. Moving right along. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the property tax settlements as presented? Mr. Mecca, second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Martzloff, would you like to introduce us to the Medicaid presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. One of the requests from the Board of Education this past school year was to learn more about our Medicaid, excuse me, Medicaid plan and processing. And so this evening, Dr. Sieri and Mr. Matusky will be leading a presentation on this important topic. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Dr. Martzloff. I'm going to begin our exciting Medicaid presentation for everyone this evening, and then Tom will be jumping in toward the latter part. We split the presentation this evening. So I'm just going to give a little bit of background on the School Supportive Health Services Program, which is what S S H S P stands for. Back in 1998, there was a lawsuit filed relative to how New York State was processing Medicaid claims. And there were, the examples of noncompliance at that time included things such as progress notes, evaluations, recommendations, not being signed or dated, billing from agendas as opposed to from I E Ps or C S E meetings that were held, no documentation for O T P T or speech services. And what the federal government felt at that time is that schools were transferring educational costs to federally supported health programs. So as a result, there were some requirements, some changes that were required to be made by New York State with regard to this program. One of which included the naming of compliance officers. And as you see there, Tom and I are named as your compliance officers for the district. Compliance officers, you might be asking yourself a question, can they be anyone? They cannot be a consultant. The compliance officers must be employees of the district. And they really serve as contacts for whistleblowers. So there has to be an opportunity for people to report anything that they might perceive to be inappropriate practices. And to do so in a way that can be confidential and where there's no retaliation, potential for retaliation. What also was required is a compliance program. School districts, entities that claim over $500,000 are required to have a compliance program. And you, as a board, annually approve the compliance program, as you know, in January for our school district. And compliance, some of the things that are required are written policies and procedures, an employee vested with the responsibility for the day-to-day compliance program operation, there's training components, training requirements, again, the ability to report anything of concern, and several other requirements. The program from start to finish is exactly what it looks like here. This is probably one of the most simplistic slides in terms of Medicaid processing, which is a very complicated process. What must exist is there must be an educational need and a medical necessity. There must be a documentation of service delivery, and there are specific claiming practices that must be followed, which Tom will speak directly to. What is the School Supportive Health Services Program? It's a New York State Medicaid program, as it's articulated there. Claiming is all encounter-based. And what is an encounter? It's defined as a documented, face-to-face, direct medical service visit that was provided pursuant to the recommendations of a student's I E P by a qualified provider. So this isn't pre-session planning or post-session write-up. It is the service that's provided to the student. The requirements, and I'm not going to go through each and every one of these. We thought we would provide you with the information through the slide, and I'll just highlight a couple. The services I mentioned must be listed on the student's I E P. There also must be medical necessity. One without the other does not allow you to claim, submit a Medicaid claim. What is medical necessity? It must be documented. There has to be a written order that's signed and dated by a New York State enrolled practitioner, who is also a New York State licensed and registered and/or certified as required. And it may be a physician, a physician assistant, or a nurse practitioner. And as I mentioned, not only, well, I don't know if I mentioned this yet, but I'm going to mention it now, providers must also be Medicaid-qualified. So what services does the district bill for under S S H P? We bill for speech therapy. We bill for physical therapy. We bill for occupational therapy and for special transportation. We also have U D Os, which is under the direction of, and that is for our C O T As who operate under the direction of our O T Rs. So our certified occupational therapy assistants under the direction of our occupational therapist, or registered occupational therapist. This is important for you to know, because there's some very specific guidelines that must also be followed when you're claiming under U D O. The O T R must see the student at the beginning of and periodically during the provision of service. They must also be familiar with the treatment plan. They have to have input into the treatment plan and to the type of care or service that's provided. They must have continued involvement in the care that's provided to the student. They must review the need for continued services, and they also assume the professional responsibility for the services that are provided under his or her direction, along with the continued need for service, or the provision of service. The written order or written referral, again, must document medical necessity. It has to be in place prior to the provision of service. We have to keep this documentation on file. The ordering provider must be a New York State Medicaid provider, and it must include all of the essential elements on the written order, which I'm going to get to right now. And here are all of the elements on a written order or written referral. So we have to have all of these pieces before we can utilize that written order for the claim. You can imagine that if there's one element that's missing, we have to go back to the person who's providing the order and ask them to complete that order comprehensively. The other piece I would share with you is sometimes people think that you can write where it says frequency and duration. Some have the misperception that you can do a reference C I E P. You cannot. It has to be the specific frequency and duration. Elements of a written order continued, again, not going to go through each and every one, but it's very prescriptive. We also have to make sure we have session notes for each of the services that are provided, and these are very detailed as well. The session notes have to include all of this information in order for us to submit for Medicaid reimbursement. Session notes, I'm just going to point this out for everyone, sometimes there's a belief or perception that session notes are the same as progress notes, which were required to also submit under the I D E A to parents. With regard to progress on I E P goals and objectives, they are not one in the same. They are two separate documents. And a progress note would not satisfy the requirements for claim submission under the Parental consent, it used to be, prior to, I think the year was 2013, yes, 2013. Prior to 2013, we used to have to get annual consents. We no longer have to obtain an annual parental consent. It is now a one-time consent, and must be obtained before the first time you submit a claim, okay? Prior to obtaining consent, however, and annually thereafter, we have to provide parents with written notice of their rights. So one of the things that's very important to know about this is that the parent understands and has agreed in writing that they understand the scope and the purpose of what they're giving consent for. They understand that consent is voluntary and can be revoked at any time. It's important that parents know that. That they're fully informed that refusal to consent does not impact services. So for example, one of the other things I wanted to point out is that, let's say you have a referral that indicates two times per week O T. The I E P indicates three times per week O T. What's your obligation as a district? You must provide three times per week O T. You can only bill, claim for two times per week O T. Okay? So parents have to be informed that they have the ability to refuse consent, and it will not impact I E P service delivery. It's their child's right to receive their services, as articulated on their I E P. And be fully informed that accessing Medicaid does not affect lifetime coverage. Some of the Medicaid claim challenges are articulated there. Again, I'm not going to highlight all of them. It's important to note a few things. If an order, one of the things that has been, is a challenge, is, let's say you get an order from a referring physician, and the scope of that order goes from September 8, 2010, I'm just going to make this up, to September 8, 2011, and the student receives summer services. That referral would not cover the summer services, because the new school year begins in July. Okay? So again, remember, you also can't say per I E P, and sometimes that happens. The other thing that is sometimes a challenge is the requirement for contemporaneous notes. And Tom's going to speak a little bit to that in terms of one of the supports we provided to our staff was with regard to some technology to help facilitate the contemporaneous notes or session notes, which is documentation of the services that have been provided as close to the conclusion of the session as practicable. And there's a certain timeline that we have to meet with those notes. At one point in time, they also did random moment time studies. That was, I think, ceased for a year or so and has now come back on. So we have to make sure that any service provider is listed in the system. And then periodically, on a random basis, they will receive an email asking them to submit information with regard to a service that they provided. Scripts may have, must have enough information to provide services, may have enough information to provide services but not to claim. That's a challenge for us. Traveling therapists, when they're in multiple buildings that you can see, could impact contemporaneous notes. When information is missing from scripts, we'll need to go, we need to go back to the physicians to ask them to provide that information, which can create some frustration on everybody's part. It's a time-intensive process. There are significant training requirements. So there are a number of things that present as potential challenges with the Medicaid processing. We also have to, sorry, verify Medicaid eligibility. What we need to do is get the C I N number from families, and that's difficult as well, or a social security number. What we do is we ask parents through parent contact. You'll see some of the suggestions that have been provided to school districts in terms of acquiring that number. We try to be very sensitive to respecting families' confidentiality and protect the information as to who is or who is not Medicaid eligible. So some of these suggestions, what we would want to do if we were to ask for that information at a C S E meeting, for example, is to ask all families for that information at a C S E meeting, so that any party who's participating in that meeting has no idea what families may or may not be eligible, if that makes sense. And I think it's to, Mr. Matusky?
So I'll just pick up from there. And I think when we begin talking about the claims process, you can, you have an understanding of how rigid it is. Every piece of the documentation that Anna has reviewed must be in place for us to be able to put in one claim. I'm going to go over some of the specific items here, but claims can be rejected if you do not have all those pieces of information. You'll see, and you've already seen, the fact that a lot of acronyms are being used. And most of these are actually from the medical community, the medical industry. So the I C D codes is actually International Class of Diseases it stands for. The M P I numbers is a number provided to our school district in this particular instance that represents our ability to actually put in a claim with a specific- that represents our ability to actually put in a claim with a specified number. So, and then as you see, there's all the other codes and claim numbers that are associated with us when we do put in a claim. So, when we move forward to the process of claiming, as I just mentioned, we may have to make sure that all of these areas of documentation are in place. And a lot of this is already what Anna had mentioned, and it all has to be done in the correct order. If we do not have the information even in the correct order, or as regarding the session notes and items like that, then it would not be considered to be correct documentation. So, as you can see, all those referrals, all that information has to be in, the documentation of service, the evaluation reports, the session notes, the sign-offs from the parents, and transportation logs I'll be talking about very shortly, all that information has to be put together. In addition to this, this is the, what I would call the claim end, there also is a backend to all this work, which results in us having to send in on a, more than an annual basis sometimes, to continue to certify our school district that we have the ability to put in those claims. And those are forms that come in, they're notarized and sent back to the agencies, and they use various other agencies such as EMed and E-PACE to allow the district to use those portals to submit our claims. So, that's really the portal system that's being used when we put in all this information and do those submissions. When, one other thing on the submissions I want to mention is that we also work with a consultant in this. You can imagine that it's, as we said, we don't want to miss anything, and that is one reason why we do use a consultant. They assist us, they review our claims, and they prompt us for providing them with additional information that can maximize the dollar amounts that we're actually getting out of our Medicaid. Special transportation, they, these expenses are claimable. In the summer, it's a little bit different. It's a little more specific. We have to make sure that when we're claiming transportation, we have bus rosters every single day. It must list the pickup of the student, the drop-off of the student, it lists the times. All that information is required for us to be able to claim the transportation expenses in the summer. Regular school year is not as specific. We just need to make sure that we have them on the roster, and then again, we have just a general pickup that's showing their attendance in the school. So as I mentioned, the medical claiming process, it is what we work through on a, on really an ongoing basis. Some of the items here are just showing again that, you know, we have some difficulties and challenges that we have to be on top of, and I can say that we have a great internal organization here. It's a very close relationship between the Special Education Department, the Business Office, as well as, you know, our consultant. And we all are working together to make sure that all these pieces of the application process for a claim are put in place. Again, I'm not going to go over each one of these items, because we've already talked about them. We've talked about how we need to maintain the items. One thing I will mention, though, in regard to the last few items here, is training and reporting requirements. Our reporting requirements do require us to do an annual report that is a certified report to the state. That is done every December. So, we put in, and those reports are then sent in. This past year, there was an additional step that we had to do as of August, and that was to go back and certify the claims from 1314, 1415, and 1516. And essentially, what they wanted us to do is, they gave us the reports from their end. It was a reconciliation process. We had to go in and reconcile, and then there would be, any adjustments were to be added back to us, we would receive those adjustments. And we did receive some claims due to some prior years this year, and you'll see how that has positively impacted our revenues. So again, this Certified Public Expenditures is the report that is due usually in December. And then again, it's also done through another portal called the Public Consulting Group. I would also mention that as we go through these, we receive updates, sometimes on a monthly basis, sometimes on a weekly basis. It's really quite challenging at times to keep up with all the changes, but we do that. It is a good system that we have cross-checks in place. I can say with, again, the Special Education Department, the consultant, and the Business Office, and that's really how we are able to make sure that the, not just the documentation, but the claim processing is all occurring according to the right timelines. So when we maximize revenue, I've listing here, our consultant is called Management Advisory Group. We have been using them, I think, for the last 10 years. They provide what I consider to be a very cost-benefit service to us. They also assist if there were to be an audit. They would be there to assist us in reviewing the information. So, they are truly, in my view, a great benefit for us. We meet with them twice a year face-to-face, and with that, we go over claims, we go over what's on our list, what's in the pipeline, and then what challenges might be there. And although we are quite experienced now in knowing how to process these items, they always offer some additional suggestions that they might receive from other school districts, since they work with many school districts throughout New York State. So, coming to our revenue history, here you can see that in 1718, our revenue was 329972. 2016-17, it was 275855, and it was 213955. So, the reason why it's been climbing is really due to some changes and allowing us to claim some additional expenses, as well as the work that we have done internally to, again, try and maximize it. I will say that the 1718 year-end expenses, I can report that very positively, that that number has grown due to our audit. And it's not that our audit did anything, it's that when the audit was going on, we were able to receive some of those prior-year expenses. They came in, and so we had to accrue that revenue. So again, it wasn't anything the audit did, but it was something that came in, so it results in that number for 1718 actually going up quite significantly to $932,577. Now, we will not receive that again in the future. That was due to prior year's revenue coming in, but it was a very nice one-time revenue that we received this year due to those past years, which were really held up by various federal-state-type requirements, and then they released the funds to us. One thing I will note, our revenue is half of what really is received by the state. They receive half of what we claim. So, it benefits New York State, that school districts are putting these in claims, and that's how the process has worked. So, with that, thank you.
Mr. Mecca.
Thank you for the presentation, and you really do get a good sense of what you're doing to try to maximize the dollars that we're bringing in through Medicaid billing. And you anticipated a lot of my questions, I think, as you were giving the presentation. One question that I have is, it's a relatively small amount of money that we're bringing in through Medicaid, and it seems like, for me, I don't know everything that goes into it, but it seems like a lot of effort. Is it worth it?
Well, we have had conversations at the very, when this whole change in process happened, and at that point in time, we thought about whether it was worth not claiming. And I think where we really determined is that if you were to say to our community that you were going to not put in claims, that would be a difficult conversation to have. So I think we have a process in place. I thank Dr. C. Arianna for, you know, really orchestrating it on the special ed side, because that's really where the documentation and all of those issues are, and where they really have now, like a well-oiled machine. And that's why I think it works. And the other positive thing is, we are able, as you see from the revenue climbing, we have been able to claim significantly amounts of revenue, and that's really due to that process.
So, looking at the services that we bill for, I noticed there are a few Medicaid-eligible services that we don't bill for, and I wonder if you'd be able to give us some color as to why that might be, like psychological counseling or psychological evaluations, for
There are only certain licensures under which you can bill for psychological counseling and evaluation. So it's a licensed psychiatrist, a licensed clinical psychologist, some of those titles which many school districts don't have within the district proper. So that's part of that reason. There's also very structured processes that you have to follow with regard to evaluations. We do a comprehensive evaluation, so when we do our evaluation, they are not standalone reports. They are a comprehensive written report that has all of the elements included. We are actually looking at that right now, Mr. Mecca, to see if there is a way we can bill even with that type of structure. We think it's a more meaningful report for families instead of these separate evaluation reports. And so, in prior consultations with our consultants, we weren't sure if we could bill with the way we write our evaluations. And so that we're looking at that right now. If we could add certain structures to our current evaluation protocol, can we submit the evaluations for claim? So that's one of the questions we have outstanding.
And following up on that, I guess I'm wondering, who does the psychological counseling pretty much in terms of title in the school district, or is it, does it vary?
It varies, depending upon the needs of the student. Again, thank you to the board, because we have a nice full complement in our buildings of school psychologists, social workers, and school counselors. You know I'm always advocating for more, so my last hurrah to get that in. But they do a wonderful, wonderful job, and it does, again, vary. It could be any one of, any one of members of our staff.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Mecca.
I might have more, but I'll let...
I'm just wondering, of all of our claims, what percentage is being rejected, and how has that changed over the past, you know, so many years?
Really, at this point in time, we're not seeing that many claims at all rejected. I would say it's less than 5%, and then those that are being corrected. So, we get a report, and that's where those face-to-face meetings are with our consultant. They come in and they say, "We have this in the system." And so for the most part, everything that we're able to claim is being claimed, and it's in within the timeline.
Mr. Mecca.
Two kind of like bigger-picture, state, federal government-type questions, I guess. We spoke earlier about New York State being an equal partner in funding public education statewide at the 50% level. Apparently, there's no problem with collecting 50% of the revenue that we bring in through this program. Is that statutory decision, like that's in state law somewhere, or how?
I do believe it is. I can't quote the law, but it's been that way for many years.
Okay. And then just to follow up, I don't know, just kind of, anything you might have heard about the federal government's support for Medicaid in the schools program. I had heard a while ago that the federal government wanted to shut this down or reduce the impact of this on their budget. Have you heard anything lately about that?
Just that.
Okay.
That's all.
Mrs. Leatherboro, did you have a question? No? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the school district legal counsel as presented? Someone? Mrs. Leatherboro? Thank you. Is there a second? Dr. McClary? Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to table this?
I move that we, I move that we table it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Leatherboro? All in favor?
Can we have discussion on that before?
Oh yeah, I guess we could have discussion. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Are we tabling it because we basically don't have enough?
We don't have a quorum to pass it at this point.
Thanks.
Yep. That may change later in the evening, and if so, we'll bring it back. If not, sadly, I'll have to go till next month.
Yep.
Okay? All in favor? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. If you have any legislative conference reports, please send them to Mrs. Carey through WITS. A list of meeting dates has been given to each board member. Please let the board know if you're unable to attend a meeting, so that another board member is able to cover you in your absence. Does anyone need any coverage for any upcoming meetings that they may potentially be missing? Nope? Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Dr. Marsloff, can you give us a report on the summer school program, please?
Yes, there's information in your packet that details our summer school program, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baylen, who can discuss a little bit of that further and answer any questions board members may have.
Thank you, Dr. Marsloff, and thank you to the board for this yearly opportunity. I'd like to take this, just a few moments, to express my gratitude to the two summer school principals. They are unable to be here this evening, but Corey Gray served again as our elementary/middle principal, and Andre Thomas served as our high school principal. I had the great pleasure of visiting with summer school on a few different occasions. The program ran very smoothly, and a lot of very positive student experiences were had. In your packet, as we've done before, you have a few tables at your disposal, providing a big-picture overview of our numbers at each level of instruction, elementary, middle, and high, and then an overall total. We were also fortunate enough, again, this summer, to offer other programs. There's actually a variety of summer school programs under the summer school umbrella. We hosted again our English as a New Language Academy, summer music, and a whole host of other programs. Last but not least, our budget is at the conclusion of the report, again, just for your information, and we're happy that summer school was a very positive experience for the students. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Yes, Mrs. Vance Ice.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe such as Algebra I are new.
Mm-hmm.
Those students that were converting the non-regents to a regents?
Those are students taking the course as a new course for the first time. We actually, that's a great question, because we do have a few different opportunities for students in that regard. That is actually the whole course condensed down into a summer school session. We do also have, and you'll notice, different terminology throughout, is we have review courses, and we also have tutorials, and in those cases, those provide different opportunities. Again, in a more condensed fashion, it's not the entire course. It's to fill gaps, and really, the end goal is to provide the students with the appropriate instruction in order to be successful on the end-of-course measure. So, we have many students who come to summer school, as you know, for advancement purposes, to take a new course and to advance in their program of studies, but we have several also who come to improve their outcomes, both in the course itself as well as the exam.
And just one other question.
We also, what you don't see on this chart is, we have about 14% of students who are also coming just for the exam. So in that case, the students aren't taking a class, they're just retaking the exam, which on New York State does allow the students to do.
And just the other question I have is, do you think as a district, we could ever discuss potentially having some classes that are considered non-regents, allowing and making available students to still be exposed and be able to take the regents exams?
We do have the op- We do have the opportunity. Some are called conversion courses. I think moving ahead, we really should look at that carefully because those have been shown to be very successful for students. Again, the idea there is to supplement the instruction they've already received, fill in any gaps, and then prepare them to take the exam. So, there is, some of that already occurring, but certainly, we should look at that and see if there are any further opportunities to even enhance that more so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Leatherboro?
Quick question regarding elementary and middle. I understand for high schools, students have the option to take a new class for enrichment and advancement. For elementary and middle, is it more teacher referral or do parents have the opportunity to refer their children as well?
It is remedial in nature. There is actually a very comprehensive process and protocols that we follow. There are data points that we certainly look at, but recommendations are also a part of that. Typically, the recommendations come through from the teachers, through the principal, but we always invite with any conversation, any parent feedback. But really, what we're looking for, and again, this is a more comprehensive overview and looking at several different pieces of information and not one indicator as to the need that presents itself in, at this time, math or ELA specifically.
And then, to piggyback on that, is there any separate program for English-language learners or would they be in the same elementary, middle school program?
Actually, both. They are part of our program, our district program for summer school. In addition, we do offer an academy. And what that's designed to do is for students who really need that intensive language acquisition approach, direct instruction by the ESOL teacher. So, really, the broad program would not, in that case, serve those needs. They're referred to be part of the academy during the summer. And we, as you can see, we've been running it for a while. It's actually supported through our grant monies through Title III. And we're very lucky because that provides very intensive instruction in language acquisition for those students. But we have Ls in our district summer school as well, as needed, if they're referred.
Thank you. And I guess my last question with English-language learners, if you have newcomers to the district and it's their first time, are they able to enroll in the summer program before starting school in the fall for their first time?
Okay. Can you repeat that one more time? I want to make sure.
So, say a family moves here in May and they're starting school in September to enroll, are they able to sort of like jumpstart, is what they refer to it, in Buffalo Public School?
So, they were here part of, part of a school year? Yeah, it's very possible, again, through referral, as long as they're enrolled in the district. Again, it's a, there's a process behind it, so that we would look at each individual's needs and if it's appropriate that that student would benefit from being part of this program. Parents do have the option too. They don't have to obviously send the student. They are offered an opportunity. Sometimes where some of the challenge comes in is which program is more appropriate. Would it be district summer school if they're recommended for that as well? Or the academy? So, really, it is based on the student's needs, but as long as they're an enrolled student and we feel that through that recommendation process, there is a need for a referral to be made to either, either or both programs. We do work with the families and the staff to see what would be most appropriate for the student.
Thank you. I think providing the academy is such a wonderful option because, you know, with my background working with English-language learners, just being able to provide basic communication language skills is...
Thank you. We agree.
Needed before you can do the academic.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for stealing my questions. Thank you. Dr. Marsloff, would you like to introduce the mental health education literacy in schools presentation, please?
Yes, this was based on another board request that came in last spring to hear more about how it is we are involving mental health education literacy in our schools. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Siri and she's going to introduce our other folks who will be taking part in the presentation. Dr. Siri?
Thank you, Dr. Marsloff. Joining me tonight are two familiar faces, Dr. Baylen, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, and Mr. Christopher Chris Muchika. And he's... So, we're going to share the presentation honors this evening. And I'm going to begin, but we're going to bounce back and forth with one another, covering various topics. You'll note that some of the slides are slides that we created and some of the slides, for those of you that are familiar with the PowerPoint presentation prepared by the state, will notice that we took snapshots and included those in our presentation as well. So, just beginning with, just make sure I have this on. Beginning with mental health literacy and the importance of mental health. Mental health is critical, a critical part of overall health and well-being. It's important throughout the life cycle. It affects, as we all know, thinking, learning, feelings, actions, and ultimately relates directly to healthy decision-making. Educating young people about mental health increases the likelihood that they'll be able to effectively recognize signs and symptoms in themselves and in others, and how and where to turn to for help when help is needed. The focus of these efforts include things like reducing stigma, increasing help-seeking behaviors, improving academic performance, and most importantly, saving lives. In May 2018, the Board of Regents adopted amendments to the Commissioners' Regulations, which clarified that a satisfactory program in health education developed in accordance with the needs of pupils in all grades must include, must include, instruction in several dimensions of health. Two, include mental health and the relationship between physical and mental health, and enhance student understanding attitudes and behaviors that promote health, well-being, and human dignity. The Comprehensive Guide's first section, Mental Health Education in the Classroom, and second section, Multiple Dimensions of Mental Health, have been specifically developed for educators instructing on mental health in the classroom to be used as a framework for developing their own local level, local health curriculum. That's important to note. So, we're not being provided by, with a curriculum by New York State. They're providing us with the resources and tools to develop our own local health curriculum. And Chris will be speaking to that shortly, along with Dr. Baylen. The framework supports the current New York State Learning Standards for Health, Physical Education, and Family and Computer, Consumer Sciences at three levels, and is to be used in conjunction with the current New York State Health Education Guidance Document to Achieving New York State Learning Standards in Health. Excuse me one minute. I lost this page. Well, there are four key mental health literacy components important to everyone's well-being and you can see these articulated here. Again, understanding how to obtain and maintain good health, decreasing stigma related to mental health, enhancing help-seeking efficacy. That's so important that our students know, that adults know, how and when to seek support, obtain good services, and promote self-care, taking care of oneself, understanding mental disorders, and available possible treatments. Research has shown, and we've talked about this quite a bit, about the importance of school climate on students' well-being, mental health, physical health, and achievement, performance in school. We've talked about the importance of connections with others. We know that this is critical. The school climate, school connectedness, emotional and physical safety is essential in order for students to learn, achieve, and grow. So, integrating mental health instruction with existing curriculum will facilitate the creation of positive, safe, and supportive environments, as well as provide opportunities to build and practice relationships, develop resiliency, and social-emotional competencies. And we've talked about social-emotional competencies before, and I'll just touch upon them very briefly tonight. We also know, and we mentioned this earlier tonight in one of the board goals, we also know that there is, from the longstanding asset development research, that the greater number of assets a student has, the less likely they are to engage in unhealthy risk-taking behaviors. So, as an example tonight, I'm just going to provide you a little snippet of a future presentation. From our recent results, our spring results, developmental assets in terms of the district aggregate results is what I'm going to share with you this evening. On average, students with zero to 10 assets, now you know there's 40 developmental assets, so on average, students with zero to 10 assets possess 3.0 thriving indicators and 6.2 risk-taking behaviors. Now, watch what happens as their assets increase. 11 to 20 assets, 4.1 thriving indicators, and 3.9 risk-taking behaviors. 21 to 30, 5.4 thriving indicators, 2.0 risk-taking. 31 to 40, 6.6 thriving indicators, less than one risk-taking. You might be asking yourself, how many thriving indicators are there? We have, our highest is 6.6. Are there 20 thriving indicators, 30, 40? There are eight. So, when you think about the number, how important developmental assets is and why our work in this area is so critical, this data provides you some of that information. The thriving indicators, just examples for you, and I can share with you all eight. School success, values diversity, maintains good personal health, helps others informally, exhibits leadership, resists danger, controls impulsive behavior, overcomes adversity. Those are the thriving indicators. Risk-taking behaviors, things like alcohol use, binge drinking, marijuana use, smokeless tobacco use, illegal drug use, driving while drinking, early sexual activity, vandalism, inhalant use, smoking, using a weapon, eating disorders, skipping school, shoplifting, gambling, depression, hitting and/or hurting another person, trouble with the law, fighting in groups, carrying a weapon for protection, threatening to cause physical harm, attempting suicide, and riding with an impaired driver. So, think about the statistics I just shared with you. As assets go up, so too do thriving indicators and risk-taking behaviors decrease.
So, in the next portion of the presentation, what we'd like to share with you is insight into the classroom application and the classroom perspective and what our teachers are doing and what we're going to do to further enhance our efforts at the school level. It is important to note, however, before we get into that phase of the presentation, is that on several slides, it really talks about a full district or a full school approach. So, while we're highlighting classroom practices, really, we're looking at things that we've come to know very well in this district, things like SEL, things like the asset development. So, this is not meant to be all-inclusive or highlight just one portion because there are so many things that our district has been involved in and doing and really a leader in that regard. But with respect to the classroom, again, as Dr. Siri mentioned, we've not been provided with a curriculum. We're very lucky and you've heard updates before regarding our curriculum development processes. At the heart of that are our teachers who deliver our programs. In partnership with our district administrators, in this case, Mr. Muchika, there is a real effort to share best practices, to reflect on current curriculum, to look at what action schools, staff, and teachers are taking to address, in this case, mental health and overall health and well-being of students. Part of what we do on a regular basis under this umbrella is also to identify any need areas or areas for further emphasis, and also really look to developing or securing necessary resources to supporting instruction. And certainly, as you know, with our robust professional development program, it is also about providing any professional development opportunities or training to staff. We actually have, as one of these efforts for, at the elementary school level, for example, and we'll talk about middle and high school in a few moments, we are bringing together teachers and other staff members to have this kind of opportunity with Mr. Muchika to talk about what they're doing at their schools, to talk about what they're doing in their classrooms, to look at our current curriculum for health, to look at these new mental health components, although not entirely new, ensuring that our current efforts and any future efforts that we take are doing everything we know to do to support the overall wellness of our students. We're very excited about it. I've already gotten several teachers, I was sharing with Chris earlier, to email us and say how excited they are to be part of these efforts. And we're really looking forward to this, as I mentioned, best practice, sharing opportunity because I do think it highlights what's already occurring. But we have to be forward-thinking as well. If there are opportunities for looking at things that perhaps need some refinement or enhancement of any kind, it's really also partnering with these professionals to have that discussion and really look at how we take our next best steps. It really does require in this regard, as far as the mental health is concerned, and we're reminded of this by the quote from the World Health Organization, is really ensuring, again, that all of this, although not entirely new, as I mentioned, it's really a shift in mindset that we embrace and have embraced and will continue to embrace in a very comprehensive manner, that mental health is integral to overall health of not just students, but everyone in our school community. This is really a direct effort to make sure that our instructional program also includes these elements and that we are attending to this through any direct instruction that needs to take place. So, I do think it's a very, very positive opportunity for us now and moving forward.
As part of overall health and wellness, mental health includes the following items that you see on the slide before you. But it's important to also recognize that a fuller definition of mental health also takes into consideration ACEs, which are, for those of you that are not familiar with that acronym, adverse childhood experiences, because of the significant impact upon individuals' health, not just children, but adults as well. So, it's important that as we're doing this work, we fold into consideration that concept and look at trauma-informed care moving forward. We've done some work already in the district, but we need to do more in that area. It's important that when you think about mental health in the educational setting, we're supporting our children and our youth in the development of positive routines and practices, physical activity, exercise and play, good nutrition, proper sleep habits, stress-management skills, caring relationships, that we institute efforts, targeted efforts to reduce the stigma around mental health, that we foster warm and caring relationships. We talk about that all the time, but we have to take action in order to foster those. Promote positive school climate and culture, support the development of social-emotional skills and help-seeking behaviors, provide support to students with concerns about mental health of theirs, of themselves, of their friends, or of their family members. Adopt the use of an interdisciplinary partnership with an approach to accessing community resources, partnerships with member, with resources and agencies in our community, and develop support for school staff for their own mental health and wellness. Turn it back over to Dr. Baylen.
So, we would just like to highlight for you, and you have this in a more comprehensive nature on your slides, what's reflected in the New York State framework for mental health education instruction. And again, you'll hear some themes and topics repeated that we've already mentioned, but things like self-management, developing self-awareness, that's essential for mental health. And I mentioned the self-care. It's also about resiliency, talking about one's feelings, the relationship piece that's already been addressed. One whole section focuses on resource management. Really, the intent here is to, again, remove a stigma about asking for help. Where do you go for help? Who's available to help you if you need help? And again, it's advocating for self and advocating for others. So, there's a real component here of caretaking for other people and that relationship piece again. There's a whole section on physical education and what a quality physical education program includes. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, but things such as stress management. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, but things such as stress management, self-confidence and self-esteem, independence, self-control, healthy eating habits and proper nutrition. Again, you've heard many of these things throughout the years as related to our overall health program as well. And, you know, one of the items, again, that we're very proud of and certainly moving forward, one of the things that we want to talk more about is our social-emotional learning. So I'll pass that back over to Anna.
Social-emotional learning, as you know, as you recall, involves the development of five core competencies. And those core competencies are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So it's important that we provide explicit instruction in those areas for our students. We have been working as a district to provide professional development opportunities around these core competencies. We've trained a number of staff through the use of Resolving Conflict Creatively Program. Mindfulness has also been a companion, complement to social-emotional learning. It is a tool to enhance social-emotional learning skills. So mindful awareness practices, which we've been, we actually did an assessment to see how many individuals in our district have been trained, and it's well over 300 now with regard to that, to the IRP program. We are well ahead. We had a recent training with our consultant, I think it was a week ago now, and she indicated to our steering team that we are well ahead many, many districts, and she travels across the country. So thank you for your support of our work in that area. Why is SEL so important? You'll recall this from prior presentations that we have given. It results in improved student attitudes regarding self, others, and with regard to school. It increases positive classroom behaviors. And there are also some research that indicates 11 percentile gain on standardized assessments, standardized achievement tests. There's, in addition, reduced risk for conduct problems and emotional distress. And long-term, there's a long-term impact of strong social-emotional learning skills. Increased high school graduation rates, increased college attendance, increased employment rates, increased emotional and mental health, and decreases in criminal activity and drug involvement. Turn it over to Mr. Mucica.
Skip ahead one if I could. So what do we do currently? Here's a little snapshot of our middle school and things that we do. We have the health triangle, the physical, mental, and social health of the student, stress management, ways to cope with stress, self-esteem, body image, and depression. We also cover eating disorders, and we address and dispel the myths, as Anna said, and the stigma surrounding mental health. Moving to the high school, a snapshot for you of the high school. We talk about relationships. We talk about mental disorders, the symptoms and the characteristics, depression, suicide prevention. You'll see the Lifelines Curriculum in parentheses there. It's a comprehensive suicide awareness and responsiveness program for teens. And again, at the high school, we still are addressing the myths surrounding the mental health topics. Moving forward, an increased emphasis on the following, I'm not going to insult your intelligence by reading, but you can see connections to others. How do we get students to connect? And Anna mentioned before, having the students connect, whether it's through music, through clubs, through the arts, through athletics, maybe it's through a peer group that's in the cafeteria. What brings them to school? What makes school a positive experience for them? What gives them a connection to their school environment? And just seeing the homecoming week that we have at South and at East this week going on, it's really, you see the whole school come together. Kids have a purpose. They're wearing their different shirts for their class. It's really neat to see. So there's so many things woven into what we already do, but yes, we can get better. And we do have a good framework for the middle school and the high school, but we're going to get better. We have groups, work groups facilitating, getting together so that we will get better at this as we go.
I'm actually going to do a little bit on this slide, if you don't mind. Wanted to share a couple of other things with you. The greatest impact, the impact is greatest when all staff is involved in mental health promotion. As it relates to every aspect of school, it relates to the culture, the policies, the curricula, and the activities that we have for our students. The goal really is to be thinking about the articulation of a curriculum that actively engages students and builds social-emotional skills, not only in health and family and consumer sciences, but in an integrated way across multiple content areas. The importance of SEL cannot be understated. You're familiar with Daniel Goleman's work in terms of emotional intelligence. He defines that as the capacity for recognizing our own feelings and those of others, for motivating ourselves, for managing emotions in ourselves, as well as managing our relationships. So an important study conducted by Spencer &amp; Spencer of 286 different jobs at dozens of organizations across the world, found 21 competencies that distinguished star employees from average performers. Eighteen of those based on emotional intelligence. So don't ever underestimate the power of that work and the importance of that work. What schools can do now? Promote positive mental health for all staff and students. Educate and support the school community on a wide variety of approaches that are culturally sensitive to support mental health. Increase the skills of students, staff, parents, and school community to recognize the signs of mental health conditions or challenges. Decrease the stigma related to talking about mental health. We need to encourage people to feel comfortable to reach out for support and to access that support when needed. We don't have those issues with any other area of needing support. Why do we have them with mental health? Decrease support to staff, or excuse me, provide support to staff through trainings, including ways to recognize students when they're experiencing mental health challenges, trauma-informed care, suicide safety in schools training. We have, in this district, through the support of the administration and the teachers and our staff, we are going to provide suicide safety in schools training for all of our faculty, for, thank you to Tom, for our transportation department. We're working on our food service and nutrition as well as facilities. In March, we're hoping to provide the same to all of our support staff. That's important training for everyone in this district to have. We're linking students. It's important to link students and families to the wide range of available supports, not only within the school, but in the broader community. Provide guidance and resources to parents and guardians on how to talk to their children about mental health. Provide support to students living with mental health challenges, their peers, their parents, and their caregivers. So it's important for us to think about the whole school, the whole community, the whole child, and you'll find that throughout this document. This model includes 10 components, emphasizes, as Dr. Bailey mentioned, a school-wide approach, and acknowledges that learning, health, and the school as being a part and reflection of the local community. So it really talks about community partnerships. And what are the advantages of community partnerships? Well, community partnerships, community members can provide staff development. They can be involved and invited into our schools for parent education opportunities, for student education opportunities, to participate in mental health awareness events organized by our community partners. So many of you are familiar with the fact that we hold wellness fairs, and we invite community members into our schools to provide information to our students and our families. Strong school-community partnerships reduce the stigmatizing attitudes around mental health. They facilitate help for students in a timely manner, and they send messages to families that we're all here to support you. Many years ago, when we hosted a reach-out presentation to families, we partnered with two other school districts. One of the first things we did, and it was a very important thing to do, as a group, we reached out to local resources to say, if we were going to refer a family or a student to you, are you able to receive them? Are you able to provide them with support and services in a timely manner? We met with many of the agency, local agency representatives, one-on-one, to talk with them about what services they have available. The relationship between school climate and well-being, I don't have to rehash this. I do wish for you to know, as you already do, how many of the things that are happening across all of our schools and in all of our buildings. We spoke about asset development. We have sources of strength, suicide safety for schools. The challenge to change is occurring in November again as a partnership with local school districts. Anti-bias education, safe and civil schools work, disproportionality restorative practices work, a myriad of school clubs, intramurals, and athletics service learning projects, and we could go on and on. Two important themes emerged when the advisory council was doing this work related to school climate and the work of the New York State Safe Schools Task Force. And you probably are all familiar with the fact that they felt that the promotion and measurement of a school, positive school climate and culture, rather than a focus exclusively on measuring school violence, was the direction to go in. And that is the direction the state is moving in. School frameworks for supporting mental health well-being. It's important that interconnected systems, that you have an interconnected systems framework, and we spoke a little bit about that. Positive behavioral interventions and supports, you're all familiar with PBIS. Restorative justice and restorative practices is another key component to this work. We already mentioned trauma-sensitive schools and multi-tier system of support. And the last thing before we conclude and give credit to where we obtained some of our information for our slides this evening, I just wanted to share something with you that I hope you will all be proud about as a school board. Last week, I received an email from, two colleagues actually, sent at supper times, who were in attendance at the New York State Suicide Prevention Conference. They were doing, there was a report that was being presented by the Governor's Task Force, and they were highlighting best practices in the state, and our school district was highlighted. So there is a slide that has identified Williamsville School District as an exemplar in providing information with regard to suicide prevention and supports, et cetera. And so thank you for your support of our work in the district.
I had two briefly for you. One, we saw middle school and high school examples. Can you discuss a little bit more of what we're doing at the elementary school to, I guess, to make sure that no student is kind of left alone or...
Yep. Actually, the first mention I made of the folks coming together and the partnership with Mr. Mucica actually was the heart of our elementary approach. At middle and the high school, the difference you have there is you have health instruction in a dedicated way within a class. That's not the case, of course. With elementary, it's a common branch approach, so most of our teachers are teaching everything. So we do rely upon them, as we have for many years, to infuse health education, and in this case, also mental health education literacy into the curriculum. It is time, it's actually overdue time, to bring some of these folks back together, and that's where we hope to have these best practice opportunities, reflection on what is happening in the schools, in their classrooms. Across all grade levels, K through four, this will include classroom teachers. We've actually had gifted programming specialists and others who are teachers who support instruction out of the classroom also expressed an interest in being part of this work. But they will partner with Mr. Mucica, much like we do our curriculum development, is we ask teachers to dedicate their time. And in this case, we're starting with three sessions. They've all been scheduled already. They're after school over the next couple of months. This group will come together. They will talk about current implementation in their respective settings and also any needs that they see. So part of their task is also to identify any gap areas or need areas, focus areas, if you will, and also any resources. Hopefully, everybody's aware of all of the resources we currently have. So we want to make sure first and foremost that we do a review of everything we have at our disposal. We have shared folders and other systems set up, and teachers are also doing things on their own and implementing in their own way, so we want to honor that as well. So hearing from each other, bringing all of these things together, and then also looking at, as far as the next steps are concerned, where do we go from here? What other areas do we need to further emphasize? You see, there are several areas that we need to really focus upon and discuss with them, how they're implementing some of these, especially the newly identified areas at the elementary level. And of course, like anything else, make sure it's age-appropriate and something that's meaningful for the students as well as families.
My second question was, and thank you. Do we have plans to roll out anything into WITS or anything like that for parents or students to get more information or to look for the signs, that sort of stuff?
I don't know that we have any immediate plans, other than what the districts or the buildings currently share for families through newsletters, et cetera. We do have on our website, as you know, some information with regard to wellness. We do have links to other areas. That could be something that, moving forward, they do embrace and put some elements, resource elements. There are a number of resources that are in the guidance document that I would encourage the district to consider and look at because there are good, there are good resources there, Mr. Lemay, that could be shared and posted.
Perfect. Yeah, I asked that because I know, you know, when students get into a crisis or something like that, they're, you know, typically, they're not picking up the phone. They're on their cellphone, doing something, looking for something. So if we have a document, I'm thinking in WITS or something like that, that tells them at 1:00 in the morning, you know, this is what to do. Just an idea. Thank you guys very much. Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Leatherboro.
I just have a couple of questions real quick. Regarding a physical education curriculum, is yoga anywhere going to be considered, or is it currently being offered?
Yoga is a lifelong skill, so we are incorporating that, yes. So I know that at two of the three high schools currently, we are going to do yoga. So it's looking, we're looking to make it a universal, three-high-school and four-middle-school approach in phys ed, yes.
That's fantastic. And I just wanted to add that I understand that, obviously, that New York State came out with this requirement, but when I reflect on how much we do as a district, we could have schooled New York State. Because the work that we do here with the developmental assets, that's been going on well, well before I showed up at this table, it's really outstanding. And there was one particular slide that mentioned how mental health is sort of the building block for all academic and student success. And if every school district would just get that, that's so crucial. It's so crucial. And I think that's important for us to remember as a board, especially as, when we get into budgets. It's real easy to say, I want this, you know, money for this program, this program, this program. But if we don't have the mental health support staff in place, you know, there's a teaching slogan where you can't do the blooms until you do the malsas. And that's so important. You need that. So thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Dr. Marsaf, would you like to report on the status of high, middle, and middle pools?
Yeah, so there was some discussion at a previous board meeting about the potential regarding closing a couple pools in the district at both high middle school and middle middle school. So we gathered some information and held some meetings with folks at both of those schools and provided the information here in this report to the board. Given the fact that even though the information indicates we don't use the pools as much as we could, or perhaps even should, it is not our intention at our meeting next week, when we put forward our capital project presentation, to ask the board for permission to close the high, middle, and middle school pools.
Any questions, comments on that?
I do have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Van Tijss.
So based on this, we do see, and it's already been presented, that, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is cost-effective. And we see that they're not very cost-effective to keep all of the pools open. By the report of the two committees that met, it looks like this space could be better utilized. There's other school districts that did fill in pools and used it for an extra PE space, which I think is also very beneficial. Do you see, then, that potentially this might be brought up again as even the second set of eyes is a whole nother issue, having the... of eyes is a whole nother issue, having the lifeguard available? We have so many pools. Knowing it is very important that students know how to swim, I'm wondering if we are going to continue discussion with other options, that maybe if these two pools do close, maybe there's a way that they can still visit another district pool within the year to still get the swim unit. Is it, will this be brought back up?
I'm sure it will be a continued topic of conversation. If not at middle and high, perhaps at some other schools in the district. The other option at some point in time might be to build a nadatorium facility with an Olympic-sized pool that provides plenty of space for multiple schools at once to use the pool, our community to use the pool, and things of that nature. So there's a lot of different aspects to it. I also think we need to figure out what the best use of the space is. If we're going to fill in the pool, should it be physical education space? Should it be music space? Should it be health, science, social studies? What kind of space do we want to put there? And there's a lot of competing interest in each building that we need to address in order to successfully do that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Meckler?
Thanks. I enjoyed reading the report, but more so, I think, the process was interesting to see that you involved stakeholders at the various schools to contribute their viewpoints so that we, as board members, and you as administrators, could see what the general feeling is at this time about the use of those pools. I'm especially interested in that because my bias is that I support the idea of having swimming pools in the schools. So it kind of, you know, brings me in touch with another point of view on the issue. And, you know, if we go somewhere in the future with it, you know, at least we have that information. So thanks for that.
Thank you. I, personal observation, I noticed that middle gets a lot of extracurricular activity from community ed in the town of Amherst. I don't know if there's an opportunity to exploit that more for high or something like that. I'm sure the revenue that's brought in by those doesn't substantiate the operation of those.
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at, Mr. Lemay?
Middle.
Okay.
Full usage, where we see they've got scuba diving, kayaking, canoe safety rescue, family swim, recreational staff training, that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
And sadly, at high, we saw that the PTSA had one event there. So I wasn't sure if there's anything we can do to promote that more. And again, I don't know how much that revenue that that actually brings in, but it's good to see that at least it's got some use.
Town of Amherst doesn't bring in any revenue because we have a joint facilities-sharing project with them where we use each other's facilities for free. There is probably some revenue from community ed, from people paying fees, but not from the town.
Gotcha. Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Meckler, go ahead.
Just, you know, I like the idea that you brought up about the possible, I'm not sure I know how to say the word, pool structure, shared pool structure, nadatorium or something like that, right?
Nadatorium, yeah.
Along with that, I think there's so much opportunity in that with the feeling that people want to learn how to swim. I took my daughter to a community education class here on district property, learning how to swim, and it was readily apparent that the facility isn't well-suited for that endeavor. The pools at, like a Michael Phelps Swim School, for example, are better designed for something like that because it's mostly shallow end, in terms of the pool. So we, you know, if we do look at something like that in the future, we could actually custom-build something that would suit the community's needs, you know, that we see presently, and, and our desire for showing children how to learn, teaching children how to swim, swim effectively. So I just wanted to bring that point up.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to take from the table? The district legal counsel, motion from earlier this evening, please. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there a second? Mrs. Van Sis, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Now that the motion is back on the table, is there any discussion regarding the motion that's in your packet for legal counsel? That being said, put it to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, so what do we got? Six, zero, one? Did I have that right? Did I do my math right? Seven, eight, nine, yes. Six, zero, one?
Sean?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Lemay. For, since we have most of the board here now, would you consider bringing back the minutes of approval?
Yes, I can. We informally voted, and we probably should not have. Thank you. This was for approving the minutes from the August 7th meeting. Technically, Mr. Meyer, you have to abstain. I'm sorry. I'd like to bring it back to a vote.
And Mrs. Leatherbarrow also.
And Mrs. Leatherbarrow. Oh, okay, yep.
Just, just for the record, you're not required to abstain. It's just common practice to abstain if you're not at the previous meeting.
Yes.
And, thank you.
And I'm going to follow that practice.
Okay.
But earlier, it was just, just the five of us, and I figured, why not pass your minutes?
So we're just bringing back up the August 7th minutes for reappraisal. I believe we already had a first and a second on the motion, so it's just coming back up, correct? You want to restate? I don't know who made those motions.
I believe it was Mrs. Leatherbarrow and Dr. Burr.
Okay, thank you. Was there any discussion on those minutes, then, now that we have the quorum here present? No? Put them back up. All in favor?
This is for the August meeting?
August 7th meeting.
Yeah.
Abstench, uh, opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
All right. Five, zero, two on that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Put it in the record, the correct one. I appreciate that. There is nothing under personnel tonight. Facilities improvement plan. Dr. Marslov?
Yeah, we've completed a great deal of work over the summer, leading up to the new school year, and happy to answer any questions the board might have regarding each of our school sites.
Questions, Anna?
Just a comment.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Another question, just a comment. I just want to say, just from being in the schools the first few weeks, everything just looks so wonderful. Even Labor Day weekend, I live right around from the high campus, and they were out there paving the stripes and just all those finishing touches just mean so much. And when you start off the school year and everything's all sparkly, it's like a book that you read to the students on the first day about getting ready, and it's like the reality. So, just very nice. And just touring, I got to see the new tables in high middle for the science rooms, and everything looks wonderful.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Amherst youth basketball lease agreement as presented? Mr. Meckler, second. Mrs. Van Sis, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Could I just?
Yes.
Could I just, could I just request that we make sure that we get a copy of the schedule for the youth basketball?
When they're planning on using it?
Yeah.
Schedule changes throughout the, every week during the whole winter.
Okay.
I don't know what you'd even do with it if you got it.
Okay.
I'm guessing it's on Amherst's website, or changes.
It changes all the time. I think.
A way to know when there's a game so that we can show up, or, and double-check the day before if it really does?
Usually, for example, Saturday mornings at high middle school, Transit Middle School, sometimes South High School is where they tend to have their games. Sometimes on Sundays and occasionally during the week in the evening. Do you want to go to a game? Is that?
Yes, because we had talked, when we were talking about how successful it was last year.
Yeah.
I did not go to a game because any that I heard of were kind of the same time I had something else, and I really had wanted to go. So I thought, well, maybe if I knew ahead of time, I could put it on my schedule. But it sounds like that's not going to matter.
We can find something ahead of time and get you there. Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Chinese Club of Western New York BCS lease agreement as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mr. Meyer, any discussion? Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I just wanted to point out that this came about from an opportunity through discussion at community forums. I'm sorry. But this is an example of where a community forum really benefited a community member, or a community group, because they, they came to the forums, discussed wanting to be able to use the facilities, and that initiated discussion for the lease.
Very good. Correct. Any other questions, comments? Yep. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Someone like to make a motion to approve the appointments for the annual appointments as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mrs. Van Sis, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries again unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to extend the appointment of the UPK consultant as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mrs. Van Sis, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Does anyone have a request to, or matter to discuss with the committee of the whole?
Mr. Meyer? Did we actually vote under financing to approve school district legal counsel? Did we, I know we stopped then to go back. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
It was five, zero, two.
Oh, for the legal, okay.
Oh, I thought you said it was six, zero, one.
I think that was the minutes.
I'm sorry, correct. Six, zero, one. Thank you for the correction.
I'm not, I don't, I'm not writing it, so I just wanted.
Yep. Mr. Meyer abstained.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, because I, Mary and I must have been still at open house, even though we were physically here. I didn't realize that's what we brought back to the table, because I was going to abstain. That's why we tabled it previously. So yes, I'm an abstain.
Would you like to change?
That was the minutes.
Yes, I would. I apologize.
On the record, we will change your vote to five, zero.
Change my vote.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Who am I to question your vote? Five, zero, two, two abstentions, Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Van Sis. Correct?
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Committee of the whole? Mrs. Van Sis.
So I would just like to bring up two things that I know, that I believe the rest of the board is aware of, and the district, and it's not looking at revising board policy, but just continued discussion that I would like to bring up for two items. One is in regards to open enrollment, just potentially discussing extending that submission date for family requests, just moving it back to a later date. We've seen that it's caused some stress because it's a little early, so perhaps we can visit moving the date back to allow families a little bit more time to request open enrollment. And then the other one is just really looking at our current requirement for driver's ed. I did do some research, knowing that the state does require 24 hours of classroom seat time and 24 hours lab, which is considered behind the wheel. I did look at four different school districts, Orchard Park, Clarence, Sweet Home, and Star Point. Each district does different things. Some allow absences. Some actually just require the 24 and 24. However, if they miss a session, they can make it up. Some charge a fee to make up, some don't. So just continued discussion, I think, looking at Williamsville's driver education requirements in regards to maybe potentially, you know, maybe extending that a little further than where we're at right now.
Okay, discussion? Yes, Dr. Marslov?
I'll ask Dr. McKenna to work with Mrs. Moritz to look at changing our policy, excuse me, to have two days be allowed to be made up each summer if a student misses classroom or lab time for the driver education issue. When it comes to the date for open enrollment, we've had a number of conversations with our principals, and I think the general sense is June 1st would be a date to push it back to. So if the board is okay with that, Dr. Siri will go ahead and make the change in the regulation until, until June 1st each year. And we can go ahead and do that tomorrow.
The currently open enrollment is February 1st, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I would just like to say, I absolutely appreciate that. I think that's, that's wonderful. That's part of our job. We've heard different things, and just trying to work within a district to be that accommodating and already have that action plan for both those items, that's awesome. So thank you.
We've been waiting for Dr. Siri to do that, but now she's.
That's an action. Thank you. Any other correspondences to discuss? Mrs. Beeger?
I'm just curious of a little bit of an update from the district regarding foreign language. We had a wonderful presentation a few months back, and I know the idea of adding foreign language, particularly Mandarin, has come up at our community forum. So I'm just curious for a status update as to where our district is and what the process looks like for that, whether or not foreign language can just be added, or if there's a process moving us in that direction, based on some of the survey results and the interest we've seen.
Dr. Baylen, you want to inform the board what we've been discussing?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Marslov. So we have several things that, as a follow-up to the information the board received, we are continuing to collect some research and do some of the benchmarking that we had mentioned in our prior presentation. In addition, and actually, tonight was our first meeting, we have a work group of members of our school community. Our teachers are represented there, and some of us from district office. And we are looking at this through the work group format as well. But our goal is, and this was something that Dr. Marslov and I had talked about in response to what our next steps would be relative to what we shared with the board, is we're going to conclude with some recommendations coming from the work group. But we also, as you know, have our survey that we had from our parents and community. We have recently just surveyed teachers, and we are planning to survey students. So we have several different layers of information that we're going to be bringing you, that will inform some potential next steps and recommendations. And we're hoping to get that to you around December, after all these activities have concluded.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear those wheels are in motion. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Will you share the results of those two surveys, when you get those with the board, please?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other correspondences? I'm sorry, any other committee of the whole? Anything else under the committee of the whole? Nope. Okay. Are there any correspondences board members would like to share? Nope. Okay, we will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules as outlined in our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board should go to the podium, and please sign in at this time. I see that. Our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 23rd, at 7:00 PM here in the district office. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting this evening? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.